Ordinance nineteen twenty-four, that's at its third reading. Or this twenty-four twenty-four, we're just gonna do the second reading tonight, it does not need passed. And eighteen twenty-four is at the second reading and twenty-five twenty-four, that's the. We need to add it, it's for the fire department contracts, is that correct?
Yes.
And it needs passed tonight, so it'll be twenty-five twenty-four, we'll need to add it. And pass it, I think they just, just finished that about a week ago, right?
Yeah, the vote was.
Okay, so. Yeah, we don't need to pass that tonight, it's just at the second reading. Okay, so, and then the, of the, the nature grant, correct? Or, yeah, for the resolution nine twenty-four, I think we skipped over that somehow before. So we didn't have to need to, to do anything, that, any other. Anything else needs to be for the next meeting?
I, I just want to bring one up for discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Oh, I bet.
So.
As long as you don't call me madam.
The, rec guys, the last ordinance they had for a pay raise, it was in twenty-one. Sherry and I got together, we kinda like did, next council may have an ordinance, a place for a pay raise for recreation department. They've worked in the same, on it for three years. Basically, it's. Picking the, first year, it'd be thirteen dollars an hour higher rate, and they would all make fifteen dollars an hour, the crew chief would make sixteen, we crew chief would be eighteen. That thirteen would cover our seasonals as well, with college kids, the max. It worked well, since twenty-one.
Do they have any comments on that?
Do we evaluate anyone, not only in that department, but any others? Determine what jobs they're doing or not doing?
Well, rec, we, we're all retired guys, we're just thankful to have them, so.
I know, saying they're not doing good jobs, it's one of those, maybe different job.
Do we do individual employee evaluations?
If you have anything?
Yes, nothing?
You wanna send me an email tomorrow, tell me you just had something come down the pipe?
I hope so, that's always good.
Yeah, it's great. Sherry, you gonna have anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mary, you gonna have anything?
Hmm. Hmm, huh?
Bite your lip, cause you want. Max is laughing.
I thought that was funny, how it has.
I probably won't, but I could be like, Dave, and say like, hey, right after this meeting, I need something, I, I don't look for anything. Rec pay, enterprise zone, I think you already have, so, no, I don't think so. I hope not, unless it's like to accept a bunch of money.
Anybody else have anything, as far as ordinances go, I know the housing. You said something about the housing that's coming up, or what they wanna do with the part of pretty products?
Or the, as you recall, we moved the, I think it was five or seven parcels at the predies lot, we went from M two to R one, I believe. But there was two parcels, and it would be the two that sits between the dally and Bob Johns, there are stills, I haven't, either M one or M two, I don't know which.
I, I don't remember changing the zoning on any of his lot, I thought he pulled these applications.
Yeah, but then, then we reinstated, I believe we did.
Yeah, we, we reinstated the, where he's supposedly going to build those houses, that he said it, I mean, he had made the comment that he wanted it done, so he could get started like the next day. That's been, yeah.
It's been a month or two now, yes.
It's been more now, yeah, I mean, he was in here, and now, now he wants to put apartments in there, so.
I think if you go ahead and build those houses, then come to us about the other ones, that might be better. I was understanding, he was doing like sixty units up by Newcomers Town someplace.
That was in the paper, actually, I heard, I'd heard that as well, but.
If nothing happens.
He's the one that said he wanted to get started so soon, and it still needs move, half the time.
I'm with Tom, I think we see some progress on the original zoning change, and we may consider looking at the rest of it. I'd have to have more information on the proposed apartment complex, I can decide.
Anybody else have any comments on that? But you have anything, it's, I know we have to be done by six twenty, but this will really do.
I just have a couple. An issue with Kimball's this past week, appreciate Max helping out with it, but. My whole neighborhood went two days without recycling being picked up. When they finally did pick it up, they picked up everyone's, but mine, whatever. So I called Friday morning, the lady I talked to said she would call me back, she didn't. So I called back about two thirty, and talked to another lady, and told my new, there was clause in the contract about penalties for not picking up trash and recyclables in a timely manner, so. Miraculously, they showed up and picked my recyclables up, and she did call me back, but the first lady, you know, I might as well talk to that seven-up model. Talked to another area resident who said they had called, got no response. When I drove down Cambridge Road, it must have been Thursday morning. There was recyclables everywhere, probably must have been from the wind blowing stuff down Buena Vista.
Yeah, in the water.
There was a can, with recycle can on the sidewalk right by Cambridge Road, trash on the guardrail. I guess that they picked it up Wednesday when they were supposed to, that wouldn't have been an issue, I don't know if the city cleaned that up, or who cleaned it up.
The city come up and cleaned it up, cause I had text, they, I just asked them to do a drive-by, I had, I had four dumpsters under a truck, or four cans. And Dave, Dave said, and we probably did, we got two and a half inches of rain, but that had nothing to do with them not doing their job.
Right, right.
And there was trash, it looked like they saw it, and it was, I mean, they're just not doing their job, and I don't. I, I know that they, they recycle because they're, they're not making a profit off the recyclables, but, you know, if they're not recycling, go ahead and throw them in the.
Yeah, if you don't want. It's not, it's not the only area, and Beaumont was working on that, and he was out today, but it definitely. From what I gather, what a resident emailed me in another part of town, is the excuse was understaffed or not staffed.
That's the same thing we heard, and that, to me, we have a contract, and that's not our problem, that they don't have enough workers.
They go to a restaurant, the owner of Kimball goes to a restaurant, and they're understaffed, he's gonna be upset.
Right.
I wondered, there were, cause I noticed, like, typically, my recycle was picked up early, or right around my trash, and now it's like opposite end of the day, like late at night.
And the thing.
So no, it's like, the same people are doing the trash, they come back around.
If I, if the city can at least communicate, like, hey, don't put that out there, they're gonna be there tomorrow, then we could have avoided that, we received no communication that, hey.
From them, right, from. Their company's horrible, to be honest with it, because they, you know, they didn't pay the, the city's wages for cleaning that up, and that was their job.
Maybe it's time we start, it, it's in the contract, and maybe it's time we start instituting that clause in the contract, where they pay the penalty. Or somehow have Bobby figure out how we avoid the contract, and find someone that's reliable, to pick our trash and recycle it up.
Cause yeah, I've talked to a few people, and they said they would be willing to pay a few dollars more for someone better, so.
Anyway.
What did you have a few years ago, then?
Yeah. I appreciate Max calling.
I thought he was kidding, that yours was so.
No, the only one there, all he had to do was turn right, it's right there, he should have put a big flag on it.
Got all these emergencies, huh?
Yeah, cause I told Dave, I said, if, if Kimball's would have called the city, and the city could have got something out, and. I just knew at seven o'clock, they weren't gonna get the recyclables, so I pulled mine back, but everybody else is assumed it.
I think they have been out late, I mean, they've been by my house six, six-thirty at night, so.
They got mine in daylight this week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't understand, cause I know, I think the guy that's working the doubles has been the guy that's been around here forever, it's kinda like the boss of the drive, you know, when they're coming down. And always before, you know, the guy that worked so many hours, and they timed out, blah blah blah, to come back. Well, if he's working a double, he's more hours than what they used to be able to work, cause I seen the same guy, they've got recycle, they said, we got my trash in the morning, and I was on the boat at six-thirty. So.
I don't know, so.
They never did get, like you said, they didn't get, I, my trash same as yours on Wednesday.
I don't know if it was in the city, but I just recently saw a post this afternoon, that Kimball must have got a new driver, because they ran over three signs and. Three or something, so I don't know if that was in the city, I think it was after four, so, if that was in the city, we're sorry, and we're working through this, so. We, even our contacts at Kimball have changed, so, not just on the road, but also within the office, so, we've been dealing. With that as well.
Do we still have a local contact that works for Kimball?
No. Nope, so there's not that local contact, and then the, our rep has changed about three times since I've been here, so.
Do you have just one more year on their contract, or is that longer than that?
I think three, I think two, was it a three-year extender, I think it was three years extender, and we have probably two and a half, I think.
Sure, you'll go with budget?
Sure. First of all, at the very top, I noticed, as soon as I sit down here, I forgot to go in and change the header, so it's actually the twenty-twenty-five budget, so, I'll get that correct, and get eighty a bit. As we're, you know, going over multiple times now, every year, required to furnish. Two years actual, this year estimate, and twenty-five estimated revenue. Some little notes, as I was going through, we're gonna start to see, and the first two pages are the general fund, general fund only. The income tax, you can see, went up about four percent, this is, that's only the general fund portion, only the portion that went into general fund, because we know. Income taxes split, you know, into multiple funds, so the general fund portion was up there about four percent. The JED income, that's our portion only, it was up, I think, about twenty-six percent, and anticipating that to go up as. We get full years in out in the Tuscarus JED, where the big impact is with the new medical center and their wages, we don't have a full, full year. Twenty-twenty-three was not a full year of wages, so, we'll see where that takes us. And then local government funding, that comes from the county and state, and that's, has stayed pretty consistent. Little cigarette tax and liquor permits that we get in, the liquor permits have gone up since we allow more now in the city, I guess. And property tax allocation, that is home set and rollback money that we receive. State grants, that was money that we had previously received for the health department, so you'll see twenty-four and twenty-five, we will not have anything come in. Same with the other, that was other in our, in our governmental revenues, and the big bulk of that was grant funding. Through the health COVID dollars, that, the health department got. The other little bit that will come in is from the city schools, that they pay for some field maintenance for. Our recreation that we do at the football field and softball fields. Charges for services, that intakes our cemetery municipal court, in twenty-twenty-two, that included health department, and then. So that's where you can see that has started to, you know, to drop off with, it was usually about eighty to ninety thousand dollars, that the health department itself would bring in. Finds and license, it was up significantly in twenty-three, and that was one large building permitted about seventy thousand dollars, so that was kind of a one-time, it was for the new justice center. So I'm taking it more back down to what it would most likely be.
Sorry, did I interrupt?
No, no.
Mary, did somebody else get ten more gaming license, cause I saw on the mayor's report, but. On the last one, it was on there, the last mayor's report that we had, and then this one here, the same thing was on there, so, did somebody else come in and get?
I think that was the final place, the final.
The last one.
Last one, yes, the last.
So she just left it on there.
I, I'll look into that, and see if, yeah, see why, yeah, I don't.
I didn't know somebody else got machines, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't, I'll look into that, and see if she just didn't take it off there.
And then we have miscellaneous and franchise fees, our franchise fees, we receive about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year from Spectrum. So if anybody's still on there, and you see on your bill, a cable franchise fee, that comes to us. Other sources, that's our municipal court two-fifths that we receive from the county, our admin fees from water sewer and solid waste. Down to our expenditures, security of persons and property, personal service, that is our fire department, that's what we fund towards, for our guys. Through salaries and the insurance, medical insurance. The contract services is what we pay towards the sheriff's contract out of the general fund. And I've taken that down for twenty-twenty-five, because I want, I'm going to use as much as I can out as a safety security fund, I'm gonna use that first. And save the rest for general fund, so, I'm looking at where our cash balance is, and I, I did it. Last month, I did not charge the general fund at all for the portion of the sheriff's contract, I was able to take it all out of the, the one-twelve safety security. Public health, that is now just down to the cemetery, and then the contract is the health contract with the new public health district. And supplies, I'll back up under the safety security, supplies and materials is street lighting. And on, just kind of the opposite, I'll probably start to take a little bit more out of the general fund for street lighting, and. Not as much out of the two-on-one street fund, so, cause they're, you know, with employees and wages and so forth, you know, any, there's. I can just safely take a little bit more of the street lighting out of the general fund. Public health, as I said, it's just down to the cemetery, the health contract, supplies and materials for cemetery. Second page, leisure activities, that's simply recreation, recreation department. Community environment, that's our contract that we have with the county for the seals, weight and measures. Contract services, that's liability insurance on that line, and the supplies and materials includes the property maintenance that. We appropriate every year for that, demolitions and cleanup and so forth. I put the estimate back down to closer to what this year, it's sitting there at sixty. I, I doubt that we, I really doubt that we spend that, so I took it down for twenty-twenty-five to be a little bit more realistic in what we actually do spend. General government, that takes care of the auditor's office, mayor, service director, law director, treasurer, muni court, and income tax. So the first personal services is just all employee-related expenses, from wages to health insurance to Medicare to P E R S. Supplies and materials, that's just everything that goes on with the day-to-day operations of those funds, and, and the contract services. Mostly is probably all liability insurance. Other uses, that's tax refunds, the tax rebate that goes back to Kraft in Riverview, and a small amount of cemetery capital improvement.
When does that come off here?
We have tax year twenty-four, that we will rebate in twenty-five, and that will be the last year, and at that end, we'll be close to. Two million dollars is what we have, have, it might hit just a little over, I think this time it was the highest in. I wanna see, it was a hundred and sixty-some to each, hundred and sixty-five, my mind's seeing a hundred and sixty-four on that P O, but. I can't tell you the whole number, so, say a hundred and sixty-five thousand is what went to each entity, so. Um. I'm just kinda holding steady there with the general fund. Next page is fire pension, that's where a portion of your property tax that you pay must go into the fire pension fund. And it's usually right around sixty thousand dollars a year, we use that to. Pay their, our portion of the share of the pension. Next page, we get down into special revenue, they're all kind of self-explanatory, what everything is. Just have to estimate what I think the beginning of the balance is gonna be for twenty-twenty-five, estimated revenue, expenses, and what I think that fund will end their balance with at twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Debt service is. Where I was saying, we have income tax allocated, we have sixty thousand dollars a year from income tax that goes to the debt service, and that pays for a couple of street loans. There's capital improvement, fire capital improvement, that's the four-ten fund, the capital improvement is the four-on-one capital improvement fund. And then your enterprise funds, which are the water, water contingency, water West Lafayette, water debt reduction, sewage, sewage contingency, solid waste, and then. As you, if you remember me stating earlier that the stormwater, since we increased it and took it away from paying the debt. It converted to being now an enterprise fund, so that's, I moved it from special revenue down to the enterprise fund, where it has to be captured there. And then on page five, internal, internal service funds, it's our escrow insurance, that's again our employee health insurance. Uncon funds, we have a little ten thousand dollars, and then our fiduciary funds, again, I have to report the fire pension there, cause it's really not our money. State withdrawal bid bond, we still have, we still have five hundred thousand sitting there from the church fire, and then the. Two jets and the West Lafayette sewer collection, that is a fiduciary fund, cause that's, you know, it's, it's just not our money, what comes in and out. And the next pages are, the last page six exhibit, we just have to anticipate, show what we think we might spend towards some capital improvement projects. And then we have to list our, our debt, what our outstanding debt is, and what the principal payments are, we don't include the interest, but what the principal payments are. For that, and I, I noticed, I have one here. I think I might, I wanna get with Dave and see if maybe we might just wanna pay you this baby off, cause if not, it's not gonna be paid off until twenty forty-six. I probably won't be here in twenty forty-six. That was, that was one that we had assumed from the county. And then the following pages just recaps everything in the, the way that it needs to be for the county, I'm ready there for the budget commission. Not sure where we're gonna, you know, the contract for the sheriff's contract. Mark and I need to chat a little bit about that, but we're setting right now, it's, it's fine, it's just, you know, estimates of what we think their income will be, what the expenditure will be. That's on page four there, the very last one in the special revenue, I always tell the department heads, when we're doing this process right here. You know, just give me your, your best estimate, I mean, that's truly what it is, we give our estimates. I mean, that's truly what it is. We give our estimates. When we get time for the appropriations in the fall. That's where I say that's cool, when we get down to the nitty gritty of it and get your individual line items. And then from those, then we'll make sure, you know, I'll make sure that's a certificate that I do and have to file the first of January. You know, that will be in compliance when it comes to that. So. Budget commission will probably be around August second or so Tuesday. I tried to ask for the date, but they didn't have it set yet, so, but anybody's always welcome to go to it whenever it's with the county. If there's any questions, that's it. No, I'll just get, I'll get you a correct copy with the. Always forget to go up into that header and change that.
Do you have any questions for Tiffany over the uh twenty twenty four?
Mayor?
Uh I continue to work on downtown funding. Uh we are going to apply. Uh there's some ODOT small cities grant that I think it's up to two million. And then there's also a tap grant uh that we are going to apply for in the fall. It's basically going to be a couple of blocks at a time. Uh it sounds promising. We don't have any word right now. That we got it, cause we haven't applied, but we. I, that's kind of my strategy. If we have to do it two blocks at a time, we are going to do it two blocks at a time. So the plan is already, the initial plan is already laid out uh through the ad blocking grant program. We got preliminary engineering uh for uh downtown revitalization, so. We're already at least that far. It's just getting funding. Uh the small cities program through ODOT. We are, other than Cambridge and Mount Vernon and District Five and ODOT. Were the only three cities our size that qualify. Uh to my knowledge, neither one of Mount Vernon or Cambridge has submitted anything. So it's looking good.
What can it be used for, Mark?
Uh I I think they consider a small cities a safety, isn't it? Right, they're right. We're using.
Lines and sidewalks.
Right, yeah, safe, more of a. Right, but it's a, yeah, transportation uh. We are going to at some point do a roundabout study around the four, four corners of the courthouse. And if experts say it needs to be done, we're probably going to see those sometime in the future. So I always tell people, they're not that difficult. You just keep driving if you don't know where you're going. I've also seen that they create tornadoes. I I don't think that is factual, but you never know. Uh so. I don't want to do a downtown revitalization and then get into. Hey, we need to look at putting roundabouts. The the O H M, the company that did the initial design plan for downtown. And who is also working on the skips landing project that's funded. Is the company that is going to do the downtown revitalization. Uh and who's helping us with the funding through ODOT. So. We're, we're getting, I don't wanna put roundabouts and then do a downtown rebate. So it'll ca- it'll all start and begin at Water Street. The third street is where the initial, is where we're gonna start and we're just gonna work our way up Main Street. So. People don't like the way that looks, then they're gonna hate the way the rest of downtown looks, but it's, it's a pretty simple plan. Uh I think the the downtown merchants will be satisfied. It's really um. Trees on corners, uh then kind of bumped out in the middle, mid block with crosswalks. To try to calm traffic down. Uh and then some landscaping there, lights and and uh new sidewalks. It'll, it'll look nice. Um Columbia Gas, we met with them today uh on multiple issues, uh a lot of just. How they're filling holes in the streets and where they're digging and letting us know what they're doing. Uh as well as they have a pretty large uh capital investment. On upgrading old galvanized lines, really in this end of town, uh main chestnut walnut. Uh locust, sycamore and and different areas in this end of town. So we're trying to plan accordingly, so we don't pave a street and then they come through and rip it up. So it's. Just communication makes the work go around.
Well, Columbia Gas continued to put meters in the back of the buildings and not.
We, so we talked about that uh and. Uh the answer that I got is they can come up with creative solutions to hide meters. And I said, yeah, behind building. So uh I think the the, they were talking about Liz's building down there, how. That's, they put them in the back or on the side somewhere, so they're kind of, they were hidden and that's what we're gonna have to work through. And if we're going to fix Main Street, I don't want them, us fixing it and them ripping it up. So we have to get really coordinate with what we're doing with them. And I think they understand that. Uh fire contract, we have completed uh and asked me. Uh negotiations are beginning in a couple of weeks. Uh Bob Beaumont's working with the Kimball situation with the recycling. Uh like I said, a simple like email, hey, we're not gonna be there today, would satisfy me, so we could communicate it out to residents. And for some reason, we haven't got that. So downtown, wanna let the community know that downtown and and you can call Tiffany on this one. She already told me, you can call her on this. Uh westbound lane of Main Street and the five hundred block. You know, five hundred block, Tiffany? Yeah, yeah. So uh Carol's Men Shop area. The collaborative area, that block right there, uh the westbound lane will be shut down. I'm going to say for a month. Hopefully it is, it is less than a month. But for roofing that building, uh for the collab building. It needs to be shut down so they can get materials on the front of the roof. So it will be a minor inconvenience for. Uh long time gain. So I just wanna ask for people's patience. Uh have talked to merchants downtown about parking. And it's, we're gonna work through it and, you know, the people are talking to one another and. It's a, if if you wanna know, I know one occasion that a business, someone said that somebody. Downtown said something about their business or whatever. No, if you have a question, go to your neighbor and ask them. Instead of, they said he should, we said, all that stuff, you know, the things that we deal with. So uh. We will, hopefully you can never find a parking spot downtown is my goal. Because we know it's going well.
We developed that theater, that'll happen.
Right, that's exactly what, we want someone to park. At Water Street and have to walk past every single business downtown to get to the theater. Okay, Tiffany's got all the funding for parking garage. Almost. So that's, that's what I have. I was, I'll bring up Bayberry. We were up on Bayberry on a drainage project. That that flooded a couple of homes on Flint Lane. A lot of topsoil pushed down into a drain and and created a a huge mess. So we were out with Josh Kemp today, our our part-time engineer and and he is working a. A resolution to that plan, so.
Can we uh, maybe it's not a problem. Can we do anything about the one business on five hundred block of Main Street where they congregate out front?
Yes.
I just don't think it's a good look for Main Street.
I believe, I know what you're talking about. I know Max and I know Tiffany. I believe there was gonna be a couple of phone calls made to that business.
Alright, thank you.
I got a quick question.
Yeah.
The uh sidewalk between Chestnut Street and Main Street on Seventh, on the Seventh Street sidewalk. Be on the east side. That is a, from from Chestnut Street to behind the Allwell Building is a total wreck. During Memorial Day parade, I happened to be parked over at the Allwell parking lot. And there were a couple of handicapped people that absolutely, there's no way you could maneuver anything.
Is it where the trees, where we just.
And it's just covered in grass. I mean, it's all.
Covered in grass now and uh the wheelchairs have to go out into the street. I think that really needs uh some attention. I mean, it's part of your downtown, so it's just really serious there.
Brick sidewalks that are up.
Apartments are empty on the corner and then there, I think the other house is empty all the way to Allwell.
Same person that is all there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm going down Seventh Street right here.
Yeah.
That is a very cooperative property owner. I'm sure that will uh, I'm sure that will be easily fixed. We will, we will say something to try to address it. That's the only promise that I'm making.
Because grass and bricks, if we give any thought to how we can. Improve Mulberry Street, there is grass growing up through the bricks on both sides. It looks like heck.
Uh yeah, put asphalt on it. I think I I like, I love the way the brick looks. Uh it's just bumpy and.
It's bad. I don't know if we can kill it, kill the.
On a happy note, did you drive down through South Lawn Cemetery and see the pretty chip and sea?
And thanks, thanks to the church too for moving their fence.
Yes.
That's, that's very nice. Appreciate it. I believe that was our.
Actually, looks a lot nicer down along the city garage in that Bueller's entrance and stuff. That looks, that looks much better. Thank you.
Anything else, man? Uh we are, Max has made a call to a company to see. Price, just to get it, just our, our people. Another thing that I wanna address is asphalt. We can't get it. We have to go to the other side of Millersburg, basically taking a half a day. Which is going to make paving alleys completely more difficult for us. We're going to figure it out. Uh I know the local concrete company that moved in behind Walmart. Has talked about building an asphalt plant, which that's who we're getting it from and and. On the other side of Millersburg anyways, it would be very nice if they could expedite that process. So. We are looking forward to that. So it's been very complicated. Just ask people to be patient and we will. We will fix.
Alright, we have a public hearing.
Alright.
I'm working this part of it.
Council meeting in order. Call roll please.
Andrew here, Barcroft, Grove, Johnson, Price, Moore, Turner.
We stand for a pledge and may stand for the case.
What's the weekend? It's in two of life, United States of America.
Under God, we can engage in our community and serve the city.
Now to email the minutes from the May thirteenth or the May twentieth twenty twenty four council meeting questions. If not, I need a motion. I may motion with proven that one. Second, Johnson, call the roll.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft, Grove, Johnson, Price, Moore, Turner, yes.
Public input, I understand we have reason why a lot of you are here. You can come up, uh, one at a time to the podium, state your name and your address. Um, and try to keep it limited between three to five minutes, please. Um, so we'll go with public input. Everybody will come up.
I'll start. I will.
Each to it. Hello, Doug Spiker, seventeen twenty fourth lane. Um, so yeah, this has to do with the flooding issue. The drainage problem that's back behind my house and one of three houses that are down the bottom of that, of that area. So this has not been an isolated incident. Uh, it's happened in the past and I understand that this happened. I mean, the city's been working on trying to figure this out. Um, I would say this time was an extenuating circumstance, you know. Uh, I've had water in my basement before. It fills up that, that catch basin down there. It either gets blocked up or can't flow through. I understand the system probably was designed in many decades ago to not, you know, it's not handling the capacity. So um, I've, I've done this before and, you know, I've paid money before to have things repaired uh, because of this. Uh, but this time was different, you know, as you probably know, all of that soil, they have not been seeded in yet. Nothing really has been done to, to set that dirt down. I understand it might have been superficial topsoil at the top, literally mudslide. Covered the entire drainage system. All that water had nowhere to go. So it was much worse this time, not only water in the house and everywhere flooding by it. So it's additional, additional. It's been four days hard labor for me and that's what fired someone home. So, and again, I understand that the only one affected. Um, but there are just things that I would kind of like to know. Number one, what's an immediate, I know there was some immediate action that was taken. I like to commend, uh, Mayor and Max for being out on site and Jim, thanks for having a conversation with me. Um, and the city workers that were there very quickly, they did a lot of work very quickly. So I want to acknowledge that. But now further, I want to know what is being done as far as a more permanent solution, not only to that certain location, but what needs to be done on the left granger scale? Do we have an engineer involved in planting this pit that, you know, didn't work? Uh, you know, what, what's the bigger point and what can be done to protect all of this from massive causes?
Mr. Spiker, I think, uh, Mayor just brought this up at committee meetings. So Mayor, you want to address?
Yeah, actually, uh, we were out there. I appreciate you. Fifteen years, congratulations on your work anniversary. Uh, we were actually, me and Max, myself, Max and our public works director were out today again to look at it, uh, with Josh Kemp, who is kind of our, our part-time engineer. We don't have a full-time engineering department here. Um, we were out today and just strategized. Right now, I don't think anything is going to happen, uh, with, with the way it's dug out, uh, down at the bottom, but our plans are basically to make a, uh, swale on top. Uh, so water can flow down the top as, as well as, uh, the drain pipe. And maybe reconfigure something at the bottom and create, uh, a retention, a holding spot, nothing huge, no pond. I promise Dave, no pond. Uh, but more of a retention area, so it drains out slowly. Uh, and then further look at putting a bigger pipe from uh, the fence, but I'm going to say the fence at the, at the back of Fran's house, uh, out to Flint. It's a twenty inch pipe and it, it goes into a twenty-four inch pipe on Flint Lane. So in, in the future, I don't look for any crazy flooding to happen. Uh, I didn't really look for three, three and a half inches of rain. I, I believe a resident told me they had a rain gauge with three inches of rain in it, an hour and a half. Uh, you know, as we fix issues, you know, being with the engineer today, it's a, a process. It would have been easier to do it right the first time, but now we have to figure out how to build around, uh, what is built in all that area. So.
And again, you know, I've been there eight years. Um, this has happened to some degree, four times, water incursion in my house. It's all been in the last four years and then two times just in the last three months. So, you know, I can't, that can't continue.
No, I, I agree because we, we as well would like to move forward and not have to deal. But it, and it's not saying that that's not important. It is important because I would hate to deal with that. And every time it rains, to wonder if.
That's my point. I don't, I don't want to be out of the country, out of the state and just be wondering if we're going to have a storm as my house flooded when I get back. So to you, I mean, I'm glad I know something was done, but you know, when you say we're kind of working on something, but nothing's being done immediately. Well, I hope something's done.
Well, the engineer asked me today, like, how soon do you need this? And I told him yesterday. So the, the urgency is there. It's not like, oh, we'll get to it when we get to it. We're, we will have a solid engineered plan and, and move forward. So.
Well, I'll, I'll give some time to the rest of the folks, but I know we're going to have probably an issue with the insurance company and all that. It's a whole different conversation, but yeah, I'll see my time to the rest.
Hubie Christian in eighteen oh one Bayberry Lane. And, um, I remember when that house I live in was built, my parents built it. And I've seen the pictures passed around. You know, every time they paved Bayberry, they paved on top. And if you can see the measurement, that road's risen seven inches. And now everything, there was now my driveway. Did you see from Chris Flores across the street, the pictures? It was like a river coming from her house. And she told me the first time ever they got water in her garage. That water got in my garage and it just, I've never seen it this bad. I've lived in that house in fifty years. I'm not, but, um, something needs to be done. I realize I, you really don't want to fix them up above where we are before to address the, the problem lower, which is the, uh, pipe big enough to handle the volume. So I think that's a long time, a long-term fix. We talked about that. And, uh, but sometimes you gotta be a little squeaky to get things done. That's why I'm here. That's why I brought the pictures. You can see it's a problem. And I think a lot of that problem, when they kept building on, adding houses up above us, there wasn't enough drain capacity to take what was added. Now, years later, we're dealing with a road that's seven inches higher and pipes that aren't big enough to handle the volume. So I don't know what the answer is. I'm glad we got that passed where there is money coming in now. So I hope this gets on the top of the um, list of things to be done. It, it definitely needs addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Hubie, and to address the overlay issue because for years our city, to save money, we didn't mill roads. And as long as I am mayor of this city, we will mill roads because you create, you create an overlay problem. It creates more problems. So.
That one picture says it all. You know, I, I put a flat pipe across there. And my driveway used to, when my parents had that house built, it was right even with the road. You know, they've raised the road seven inches and it's all pouring into my driveway.
And that will, at, at some point, Bayberry will get paved, uh, in the very near future. Um, one thing we looked at today, so coming out of his neighbors across the street where it comes down off winding and then shoots across basically and creates a river at his driveway. We're going to, uh, put a catch basin before it gets there. Is it going to catch all the water? Probably not. Is it going to catch more there? And, and I don't even know. We may put two or three along before it gets even down to the swell where. But with that said, when we grab that water directly, it's headed back straight towards Franny's fence. So we're increasing, it's like we're, uh, we're fixing one issue, like there's kind of a couple issues because it's coming from Pleasant Valley to winding to Bayberry and down to Flint. So it's, it's a multitude of issues that are once again older than I am, but I plan on doing everything to get it fixed.
It really needs to be fixed west, northern east.
Well, thanks for that advice. Excuse me.
Anybody else?
My name is Scott Nelson. Um, my brother Ross and I, we own the property at seventeen twenty four Flint Lane. Our mom lives there in the residence and, uh, I don't, we don't have any questions today because as a former member or a council member myself here, I know, uh, what type of person it takes to be on here and the time it takes. And this happened on a Friday, uh, and I found out about it Friday afternoon, it seemed like. And when I got there, uh, Mr. Moore was already there. I, I, he was leaving when I was coming in. And our brother talked to Max and the mayor was there. So I think the, the residents need to know, you know, what kind of people are really on council. And I appreciate, we appreciate the urgency of getting there and to, to help. Because, uh, we trust in every single person on council. Uh, we know all of you personally that you're going to do what you can do to help us. And, uh, that's what happened Friday is when I was on council, that's how I acted when these events happened. I didn't go to these event or crisis in one of my district because I thought we were responsible. Or I thought it wasn't our, you know, you know, our job to take care of it. I went because people needed some help. And I wanted to help them. I wanted to be there. So I know that's what was at Max's heart and that was in the mayor's heart. And Mr. Moore's heart, we thank you. And, um, you know, we trust that, you know, the right thing will be done. Thank you very much.
Any else?
Darren here, seventeen twenty eight foot lane. Um, just like these two, I was affected by what happened. I think it was Thursday. I mean, my only issue is I feel like it was something that was done without the, you know, there should have been an engineer involved. I don't feel that the proper precautions were taken. I understand we got three inches of rain, but we've had three inches of rain there before. And we, me and friends never had water in our houses. Now, I know Doug's dealt with it coming through his drive and stuff. To me, I just don't know why the culvert was filled in before the proper engineering was involved and the proper planning was involved. Um, the next thing is you called in three dump truck loads of dirt, knowing it was going to storm all day. If you checked the weather at all. Um, I don't understand why that was done with no cell plate, cell protector, something done to keep it from landsliding like it did. Um, so yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm in our basement. We woke up to a major issue, but my biggest issue is just that the right move is done and especially, and I do feel it was total negligence to do a project that wasn't done with the proper planning and, and proper design. Um, but yeah, that's all I got. Like they said, I went, I mean, you guys came out, you know, and Jim was a big help first thing that morning. I think it was six o'clock, maybe. Um, so yeah, I want to thank you guys for coming out and you were there, you know, at least addressing the issue immediately. So, yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
They save the best for last.
Seventeen ninety-nine Bayberry Lane. For many, many years, well over a decade, I've been trying to get this resolved because water comes not just in the Hubie's yard, but also in his mind. And his caused a great deal of damage in the basement that I can't get fixed until this problem is resolved. Because we still get water in our yard. I have had at least three times this much water lately in my garage. And of course, that creates a great deal of time. Um, the ditch itself, I do want to piggyback on Darren's comment. I, it kind of surprised me we didn't have engineering, uh, direction, but the conversation today with the engineer is hopeful. Um, and I want to also piggyback on what our mayor talked about multiple, um, what are those called again?
Catch basins.
The catch basins. Uh, it, it's a bigger issue than just between my house and the one across the ditch. Uh, it, it, it goes to many other locations. And again, it's been ongoing for many, many years. Uh, many service directors have I stood there with. And in almost all cases, a representative from the street department would say, you know, it's a matter of time until it's going to take out so much of the bank on both sides that he's going to lose his garage. And, uh, we, we put a drain in that would catch a great deal of it, but it's not sufficient to do so. Um, and then finally, I just want to look to the future. I do appreciate very much all the time you all have given for this. Um, and then finally, I just wanna look to the future. I do appreciate very much all the time you all have given for this. In the future, though, if all we do is create a. Implement a plan from the engineer, we're still gonna have, in my opinion, significant challenges. As a result of the trees that are down through there. And those trees, some of which we've already cut out, my neighbor and I. Um, and and it it's gonna continue to to block the flow of water. And and that in turn will result in probable more continued. High water on Fran's fence. Um, I and the water, the water line right now, it's on earth. It it's about this high. And and I've seen it above that. And so we appreciate the help of the city listening to us today. And I understand that the uh, that particular account that was approved by city council. Is going to have projected revenue. And I'm sure you've already seen that it's June. That's halfway through the year. I'm sure you've spent monies from that account already. My my question would be, and it doesn't have to be now. How much of that revenue is going to remain and be a priority for fixing this? And we quite honestly, fixing it for the kinds of rains that we are getting. Not just an average rain, but, you know, the record-setting rains. And that's what's causing the damage with trees falling, banks falling in, et cetera. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just, you heard the mayor. He's old. I mean, I know he's not happy about it. Neither was Max. Uh, and I know they were out there. Uh, so. They've obviously said, stated that they're getting an engineer involved and trying to get this thing resolved.
Max said, Max said by the end of the week, we will have an engineer plan. At at this moment right now, I feel confident.
Don't give a damn.
No, I feel confident that no. This issue is not going to occur anytime soon with the way it is set up right now. So I I I feel confident that I'm not setting them up for another one.
I I feel confident that the mayor and um Max is gonna go on this. So I appreciate you guys coming and I just. Appreciate your respectfulness and your grievances were hurt and we'll, I know the administration will deal with them. So, thank you.
One more thing. I forgot to say, I really appreciate, I've never seen um council members, mayors, come out as much as they have recently. And I really appreciate that. This is a problem from years ago. And you guys have talked about it, but I appreciate. Seeing so many faces out there and talking to us. I really do.
Thank you.
Just may I, if you decide to come out, make sure you have heavy boots on.
Whenever we talk to you, Dave, we do have.
So there's nothing else. Uh, we have a request uh from administration for additions to the agenda. Ordinance twenty-five twenty-four, ordinance approving the settlement between the city of Kachak and then Kachak firefighters. Uh, International Association of Firefighters, local two sixteen, approving the funds necessary to implement the agreement. And authorizing the mayor's service director to sign the contract with the IAF local two sixteen.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft, Rose, Johnson, Price, Moore.
Council emailed the mayor's report. From uh May with the uh general fund, the building report. I don't think we got the building report, the list that was the spreadsheet. We didn't get that, actually. We did not get that, but we got the general fund report and the building uh permit of the new residential, the residential operations. If we can get that, it'd be great. Uh, you have anything to add, Mayor? From committee?
No, I just wanna say it was a crazy busy weekend and the summer looks like it's going to be uh crazy busy. Wanna con- congratulate our track stars. They didn't win state, but they got state relay teams fast. I'm looking forward to see. What they have, but I mean, this weekend was jam-packed full and I think uh.
Yeah, we had a sixth place finisher in my job.
Yeah, sixth place. Yeah. So, I mean, that was Aiden, Aiden Braxton was sixth place. Yeah. Uh, I know Miss Ohio's rain's coming to an end and we have a couple uh. Young ladies who are coming up through the program who are from Kachak. So I think it's Miss Ohio Week again. So. You never know, we could have another Miss Ohio back-to-back. I'm hop- hopeful for that. Balloon Festival was awesome. I mean, everything that was that was going on, it was an incredible weekend and looking forward to. The rest. I wanna remind the community, Yodel, community calendar. If you wanna plan an event or you wanna see what's going on, go to, I believe it's Yodel backslash Kachak. Uh, just Google Yodel, Google Kachak. There's tons of stuff going on. And Corvettes were in Roscoe. There's so many things going on. I don't even wanna mention any of them because. I might forget one and someone gets mad.
Yeah, they got that theater. They should really have a lot of.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's uh just tons of things. Concert, uh. Not this weekend, but next weekend, uh Pat Benatar is downtown, the tribute. And I believe they do eighties, eighties, nineties covers. So. Exciting times. Uh, and remember, if you can't find a parking spot downtown, it's a good thing. I got scolded for saying that, you know, so I'm not saying until we don't have a parking spot left.
Matt, you have anything?
No, just uh, we will be starting a second round of the speedest brand. That's what I'm just doing with that new machine. You know, you've done a very good job with that first round. I'm not that, so. We'll uh finish our rounds based with that rain we got Wednesday night. Uh, we talked about South Lawn Cemetery. That's a limestone chip of steel. That's what the county uses for all paving now, mostly. And uh, we may look at that for some of our hours. Quarter of the price of what the actual is. So. We did have a pre-bid meeting today on a new roof for city hall. Those bids will be due, I think, in two weeks. And we had about eight contractors here for that.
I was curious if there was any registrations coming in eventually. I saw a couple.
I think uh, I wanna say four to six out of thirty. I think uh, what do you have, thirty, around thirty more that you guys?
We just checked thirty last week.
Yes, so there'll be another, another list coming in, but I I I don't think uh. We're gonna have the financial side of all that too, to give you how much time and how much money it takes to go into that. So we'll have that report along with with what we collected to you and say. Okay, let's continue or let's discontinue. But we have, I mean, everything documented, time and and postage and the cost that goes into that as well. So. Right now, I've. To guess, it's not really paying for itself. It is paying for itself in saying we've identified these properties. And maybe we can get them in someone else's hands, but financially, it's not been a a great maneuver so far. So we'll have all the info and we'll let you guys decide.
Maybe we should raise the fee and cover our costs.
Hey, that's, I mean, that's to me, if 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 you wanna squeeze, squeeze it, it's, you know, that's, that's might be worth it.
Initially, I think there won't be any.
Right, identifying, right. But I I think it's good info for you guys to have is what. What's actually going on, the time it's taking versus collection. So.
Law Director, Councilor emailed the law directors report for the month of May and questions. Bob, you wanna give us an update?
Update on the Dedman lawsuit. I was finally able to get the postal department to give me a green card showing that the mail was unclaimed. Which allowed me to then serve Mr. Dedman by regular U.S. mail and by posting the lawsuit on the building. I completed service uh a week and a half or so ago. So at this point, their answer is due July eighth. And I spoke to the lawyer that's representing them now. He's out of Columbus. He's a different lawyer than ever before. So once they file their answer, then the the lawsuit will will proceed. Uh, it's supposed to go at the top of the court's calendar based upon what's going on, but I'm sure there'll be some discovery and things that'll take, take some time. And I also informed the lawyer that uh, if we don't come to a quick resolution, that I plan on filing. Um, some vacant property lawsuits against the other properties owned by that family as well. So that's the update on the Dedmans. As to the Kimball complaints that I heard earlier, I spoke to the mayor. At this point, I'm just, I just need direction as to where the administration wants me to go. And I think the mayor is going to be reaching out to Kimball. Express our sat- dissatisfaction and then he'll uh let me know what I need to do.
Auditor's report. Reemailed the uh auditor's report for the month of May. Any questions? Bob, I need a motion to accept the auditor's report.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft, Rose, Johnson, Price, Moore, Turner, yes.
Hey, you also emailed the uh sheriff's report for the month of May. Uh, let's see here. Deputy Sheriff, do you have anything for us?
Uh, Sheriff, just one made in a council that we hired a couple guys last week and they've started their training now. So that'll be a big help.
Dave, you have anything? Okay, we'll go into legislation. Nothing after first reading. Let's put, give the first reading of ordinance twenty-five twenty-four.
Norris approving the settlement between the city of Kachak and the Kachak firefighters, IAF, local two, two-one-six, and approving the funds necessary. Implement, implement the agreement and the authorizing, authorizing the mayor and the service director to sign the contract with IAF, local two-sixteen.
For the first reading of ordinance twenty-five twenty, twenty questions or comments. Make a motion, suspend a roll, and go straight to the third reading.
Say it.
Barcroft. Call the roll, please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft, Rose, Johnson, Price, Moore, Turner, yes.
Third, give the third reading, please.
In order to approve this settlement between the city of Kachak and the Kachak firefighters. IAF, local two-sixteen, and approving the funds necessary to implement the agreement and authorizing. Mayor or service director to sign the contract with IAF, local two-sixteen.
Question issued, ordinance twenty-five twenty-four pass. Call the roll, please.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft, Rose, Johnson, Price, Moore, Turner, yes.
Ordinance twenty-five twenty-four is passed. Okay, so we'll go twenty-four twenty-four. This is just gonna, we'll just do the second reading only. I think there was a lot of the blanks that weren't filled in, so we have to get those filled in. Oh, it's clear to give the second reading of ordinance. Eighteen twenty-four.
Okay, and ordinance authorizing the adoption of an alternate method of proportionating the local government fund.
For the second read of ordinance eighteen twenty-four. No questions or comments. I'll take its course. Second reading of twenty-four twenty-four.
Norris authorizing the city of Kachak to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with MFM Building Products Corporation. Pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine point six-three of the Ohio Revised Code, authorizing the city of Kachak to enter into a related school. Compensation agreement with the Riverview Local District, School District regarding same. And submitting notice to the director, the director of development of the state of Ohio.
Heard the second read of ordinance twenty-four twenty-four. There's no questions or comments. Twenty, twenty-four will take its course. Third reading. Let's put through the third reading of ordinance nineteen twenty-four.
In ordinance to amend ordinance seventeen twenty-four, authorizing the mayor and or the service director of the city of Kachak to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan. Agreement on behalf of the city of Kachak for construction of the digester improvement project. And designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Third, the third reading of ordinance nineteen twenty-four. Question issued, ordinance nineteen twenty-four pass. Call the roll.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft, Rose, Johnson, Price, Moore, Turner, yes.
Ordinance nineteen twenty-four is passed. Resolution, quick to the reading for resolution nine twenty-four.
A resolution of authorization.
Question issued, resolution nine twenty-four pass. All roll.
Andrew, yes. Barcroft, Rose, Johnson, Price, Moore, Turner, yes.
Resolution nine twenty-four is about. Communications, um, Max, mayor, that I know it's a rough couple days. Hang in there.
It's a rough couple of years.
Yeah. As long as you're making progress and the the community has confidence that you're gonna do things for them, I think that helps a lot. So. Third reading, Tom, and state, state your cases very professionally. Clerk, when's the next time? We're.
We have one communication. It was a letter from clerk of court for purchase of property at six-twenty Custer Drive. We want to think, you wanna purchase it?
Yeah, that's, that's not even wrong.
That's, that's, that's mechanic.
That's an account.
Hey, I just wanna remind everybody, the concert's coming up on the twenty-second, seven-thirty. Uh, there'll be five food trucks down there. Um, so come down early, get you something to eat and uh let's have a good time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
What time to start?
Seven-thirty is the concert.
There's a voicemail.
I got it. I talked to her. She'll be there.
Are, is, are you the person?
I am the man, you're the person. That's it, we're being the man, Chad.
When's the date, time of our next meeting?
June twenty-four, five forty-five.
Even most of the.
I don't know, you may adjourn.
Johnson, call the roll.
Andrew, Barcroft, Rose, Johnson, Price, Moore, Turner, yes.